Okay, you're recording, so you can start whenever you're ready.
Alrighty, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, good evening, everyone. I do have two letters of condolence to read tonight. One is to the family of John F. Good upon his passing on December 19, 2020. Mr. Good served in the United States Navy during the Korean War. Also like to pass on condolences to the family of Patrick K. Gannon upon his passing on December 17, 2020. Mr. Gannon served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. Like to have a moment of silence for those veterans, any veterans and any first responders who have passed. Thank you. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, paragraph 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order, imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council, excuse me, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 15, 2020 meeting.
So a move, Mr. President?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher, any discussion?
No.
Uh, Mr. Souza, any discussion?
No, sir.
Any questions from councilors? This requires a roll call vote.
Um, sorry, I think Mr. Fitzgibbons is not here right now. Sorry, Mr. Columbotus. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Eight in favor and none against.
Okay, announcements from the president. On January 19, 2021, we will hold a joint meeting of the town council, regional school committee chair or designate, finance committee, town manager pursuant to the town charter, Article 6, Section 6-1. So put that on your calendars. Don't have any proclamations. Citizens, open forum, if there are any citizens that would like to speak. We ask that you keep it to three minutes. Please state your name and street for the record. Mrs. Hunt, I see your hand up.
Hi, thank you. Happy New Year. Glad we're in a new one and hope it's better than the last. I have three things I wanted to say this evening, as I'll be very brief. And I'm speaking as your town clerk, Marilyn Kenny Hunt, A.D. Austin Street. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Councilor Souza for a lovely gift to the town clerk's office. He made us a coat tree. We have never had any place to hang our coats. And so we very happily accept it, especially wintertime when there's coats and boots and umbrellas and all sorts of things when we go into the office. So thank you, Councilor Souza, for a very thoughtful gift. I'd also like to remind any in the public who are watching or may watch this on recording that dog licenses are due now until the end of February, February 28th. It's going to be their last before fines. And the local street list census has been mailed out just prior to Christmas. We're getting them back, but we'd like to make sure we get them back from everyone. So if you would remind your constituents and if people would pay attention to that, please send in your street list census. It is not the same as your federal census. So if you filled out your federal census, hooray, we're glad. And please fill out the Bridgewater one, too. And finally, I would just say that papers are available for anyone who wants to run for any of the positions that will be available for the April town election. Those are posted on the website. And I have not gotten an answer yet about whether District 5 is going to be on the ballot. So maybe you guys can give an answer, you folks can give an answer for that sometime during your meeting this evening, if possible. Okay, if people have want to come in and pull papers, our phone number is listed out in front. But if anybody's taking notes, it's 508-697-0921. And we can bring the papers out to you and have you sign what you need to sign to run for library trustee, counselor, school committees, or town clerk. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any other residents that would like to speak? Anne, I don't see anyone. Do you?
I don't.
Okay. Appointments, we do not have any hearings. We have none. License transactions. Petition P. 2020-035, annual renewal, common Vic, no alcohol. Mr. Dutton, any input on these renewals?
We have no issue with any of these three renewals. They're all set to go.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you. I apologize for being late.
Nope, no problem. Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Any other councils have any other questions, or any questions, I should say? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to item B, petition P. 2021-001, New Common Vic license, Gio and A, Inc., DBA, Chessman's Pizza, 16 Central Square. Mr. Dutton, anything to add on this?
Nothing to add, except for just a small matter of explanation, a small piece of information for you. This is a new license necessitated by the transfer of the business. So same, same sort of, same name, same restaurant, just new owners necessitates a new license.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Okay. Mr. Wood, any questions?
Yeah, wish them luck.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
Hey, any councilors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Presentations, we have none. Moving on to the town manager's report. First item is the Mitchell School update.
Mr. President, nothing terribly new to report. I'll go over very briefly what I reported last time, and that was that the bids came in very favorably for the town and the district. So we are looking at the meeting, I believe there's a meeting, I know there's a meeting, January 11, which is Monday night to finalize the numbers. The OPM is working on vetting all of the numbers so that once that January 11 meeting is completed, we will have solid numbers that I'll report to the council. Generally, we're looking quite favorably. The projected winning bidder was Bacon Construction out of East Providence. And as I reported, they're very well versed in school building projects, having most recently wrapped up a project in Millis. They also have a very positive de cam rating of over 95%, which is very good. So we're looking forward to working with them. They've already started, Bacon has already started their initial process, paperwork process, securing tax exempt numbers and so forth through the district and through the town. So they are well underway. So the timeline is still, still on track, obviously, with a projected completion date of July 8 of 2022. And so we're in a much better position, as I said before, to see a project that is now under budget and should stay on the timeline. The, I guess, the one piece of new news is that we have worked very closely with the district on bonding scenarios, as you know, and how the bonding will work with the town budget and so forth. So the district is going ahead, certainly with our support, to bond $35 million on January 20 to take advantage of what seem like ultra-low interest rates right now. So that is good. There, my dream is to secure a rate less than 2%. That's how low the rates have been. So just as a reminder, when we projected the cost to the taxpayer, we were quite conservative. I believe we were at the time using a 5% interest rate. And so we have come, the project will come in substantially under budget and with substantially lower interest rates. So we're looking forward to redoing the numbers after that January 11 meeting. So as I always say, more information available at BridgewaterSchoolProject.com, BridgewaterSchoolProject.com. All the up-to-date information is right there. But happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, did I hear 35 million is going to be bonded?
Correct.
And is that the full obligation of the town? Or what's the scenario for additional monies after that point?
The majority of the obligation, the town's obligation. And after that, any residual amounts, we didn't want to overbond. You never want to overbond a project, but any residual amounts after that will be bonded upon project completion.
Okay, great. And just another follow-up there. When we do have the big bonding go out and we know what the actual payments are going to be, I think we have a tax calculator on our website. We'll need to update those and certainly get it over to the website for the project as well, so that everyone can see it and understand. And maybe even do a side-by-side, because I think it would be very helpful for folks to understand what we thought we were getting into and what we've been able to do through having, you know, a very active building committee, a good OPM, et cetera. And, you know, unfortunately, COVID, to get all of, to get the money down a bit.
Do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, moving on to COVID-19 update.
19, excuse me, the, our community numbers are holding steady at around 100 cases. Roughly equal numbers come off the active list as are added on a daily basis. BSU understandably has fewer cases because students have not been there. They do have two positives and they have an additional one in quarantine. The DOC numbers unfortunately have escalated and they now, all of the complexes combined are at about 60 to 70 positive cases down there. You may have read that there were changes to the CARES Act in the recent, recently approved federal legislation. Much of it to us is exactly the same. The good news is that CARES reimbursements can, have been extended out to December 31 of 2021. Previously, they ended this December 30, 2020, so that's good news for us. We can continue to track our extra expenses and continue to seek reimbursement up to the amount that's been set aside for us, which is, at this point, I believe, over $4 million. So we will use that money wisely. We've been aggressive about securing that money for reimbursements, and we'll continue to do that. We have seen, so on the town side, we've seen significantly, you know, town staff side, we've seen some higher positive testing rates among town employees. And we've also seen increases in quarantines due to family cases. So I think as council knows in response to that, we've moved our, most of our office to appointment-only basis. We've also tried in as many offices and departments as possible to create a split shift schedule so that at least we can be assured that we're sort of splitting employees into units or teams, so to speak, similar to what the schools have done statewide, and try not to let them cross paths too much. So that is ongoing. I have set January 11 as the date at which we'll come back to the building. All of us will come back to the building. And I, that's, I'm sticking with that at this point and hope that we can get back there. People, employees want to get back to the building, quite frankly, but we're doing the best we can to prevent the spread. We do have a meeting tomorrow to review vaccine or inoculation center. We have joined with Bridgewater State University and the town of Rainham to collect the required minimum 200 doses that will allow us to conduct our own inoculation site. I can tell you that we are not particularly pleased with the lack of information and clear instruction from the state concerning the first phase of vaccination. But they have, actually, very recently, over the weekend, and then again, today, they've provided some additional guidance, which is of some help. But overall, we have not been terribly pleased with the state's planning efforts, but we'll get there. So what we're doing tomorrow is visiting sites that will certainly serve as first responder inoculation sites. And then hopefully use that as sort of a training and a test for a broader inoculation effort of the general population, which probably won't come, I learned today, until April or May. So that is, that is where we stand on COVID, but happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to FY 2022 budget.
FY 2022 budget, so '21 went by like a blur. We do have, excuse me, we have not a whole lot to report at this stage. This is the early stage of budget formulation. As you know, you referred the budget resolution to the Finance Committee for some proposed language drafting and so overall input. And the Finance Director has been working with the Finance Committee Subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee, on, you know, prior year's practices and shared a lot of the information that we have. We're working on the revenue side. Right now, we're doing a more thorough analysis of ambulance receipts. We've done much better job of projecting out. We've got much more professional guidance coming in on the nature of what ambulance service will look like in the next year and the year after. So we are taking that and using that as part of the budget process on the revenue side. We're also doing an analysis and much better analysis of new growth. We have a much better idea right now of what our new growth will be. And our next step there is to really do a thorough analysis of the entire unbuilt, all of the unbuilt properties in town. And then look at historical development rates. And with that, we can help, you know, pinpoint exactly what our new growth figures will look like multi-years out instead of, instead of just, you know, eight months or 10 months out. So that is what the Finance Department is working on right now. We're also doing updates to our indirect cost analysis, which quantifies the assessment, quantifies and qualifies the assessments against the enterprise funds. Also, in the process, doing our regular review of real estate and motor vehicle, that's a little more predictive. And then also doing, this year, we'll be doing a deeper dive into licensing and permits and be able to pull those apart and better analyze those, something that we haven't focused on yet. So on the expense side, our work right now will be mostly around collective bargaining agreements, which are, I believe, all of them are coming up in the end of '21. So between now and June, we'll be doing a lot of bargaining work with the unions and come up with more exact expense side figures. So that's, that's essentially what we're working on currently with a budget, but happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, just, how are we doing tracking revenue for this fiscal year relative to what we had budgeted? And what does that mean going forward for free cash for next year, et cetera?
Hard thing to understand. I think in terms of this year's budget, which is completely somewhat of an anomaly, as everybody knows. But I anticipate that in terms of revenue, we will do slightly better than expected. And certainly, in terms of what we have taken, which effectively will reduce the amount that we'll have to take out of stabilization, hopefully, next year. So we will have positive free cash at the close of 2021, unless some disaster occurs, but we will have positive free cash. And again, we'll put that, you know, go through the process with that. But I think what that means for the budget for '22 is that depending upon what the states, largely depends on what the state's figures are, we have anticipated having to take out of our stabilization fund again in 2022, at least as much as we did in 2021. So we're looking at at least a $1.6 million figure. We were fortunate enough to be able to replenish most of that at the, during your early December, late November meetings. But we're keeping a careful eye on what the 2022 budget will look like. So largely, again, largely this depends on local receipts and largely depends on state aid.
Right. And so I guess my point is kind of like when the golf course needed the town to bail it out of a deficit at the end of the year. And we asked the golf course to pay the town back in a future year, right? We're essentially paying ourselves back for the money we're going to borrow from stabilization, right? And use that first to do that, which sounds like we've largely done for this year. But again, using conservative budget practices for next year, we'll probably first rely on stabilization and then look to backfill. Okay, great, thank you.
We're very fortunate, you know, I think over the years, we've been quite conservative. We've been able to build up stabilization. As I've said before, we've never expected COVID, but we did expect a downturn. So over the course of the last year, we've incurred a lot more expenses than we normally would have. And we've seen a drop, a substantial drop in revenue that is unprecedented. So there are a lot of moving parts, but ultimately, 2022, we are anticipating having to borrow out of stabilization.
Mr. Gallagher, you had your hand up?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, Mr. Dutton, I sent you something about a month or so ago, and I don't know if you've heard anymore or if you followed up or you're keeping your eyes on this as far as the report that came out from the state auditor's office relative to pilot money. And the fact that we may, we may end up losing some pilot money simply because of a piece of land at the prison being transferred to the fire, I don't know, department or whatever, the state fire department for the fire training facility. Have you followed up or keeping your eyes on that for the town of Bridgewater?
I asked the assessor to look into that and give me an exact, some exact numbers if, in fact, we intend to lose or we anticipate losing any pilot money there. We don't get a lot of pilot money, but we do get some. So any reduction, obvious, any reduction in revenue is a matter of concern. But I have not heard back from the assessor's office on that, but as soon as I do, I'll, I'll report back. So I think Councilor Gallagher is talking about the transfer from the DOC to the Fire Marshal's department, I guess, state fire marshal, in order to create a second or third fire training facility. I think the state's intent is to create three sort of regional facilities, Stowe being one, Bridgewater being one, and then one, I believe, further out in the western part of the state. So that transfer, which is one state agency to another, there's a question as to whether or not that would, that would take that piece of property that's being transferred sort of off of the pilot roles, so to speak, because the pilot payments are calculated based on the amount of state land in a town as of a certain date and the value of that state land as of a certain date. So if it's transferred, there's a question as to whether or not that would continue to be, or that piece of property would continue to be calculated the same way. So we are looking into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to Academy Building update.
Academy Building update. So we have a couple of things going on, and well, more than a couple of things going on in the Academy Building. But I think of particular interest to the council and the public is the installation of the automatic door openers on the Bedford Street side, which would include opening the door to the exterior and then opening the door to the, excuse me, the stairwell. We do have pricing on that. It came in a little more favorably than we had anticipated. And so you will see that in your, what we call our 2021 B capital appropriation. I think if you remember, we mentioned that the, that A, our A effort came at a time when there was a lot up in the air concerning COVID, and we didn't want to be expending anything more than we had to, just in the event that we had to shift our financial focus elsewhere. It looks now that the view is a little clearer, so we'll be coming to you with a B appropriation. It will not include everything that we had originally anticipated for 2021, but it will include the automatic door installation, the automatic door openers on that side. So that is in the works. We also have some selective repainting going on in the spring, along with the Old Town Hall. And we have also made, in our, well, we're making a lot of technological upgrades throughout the building, including more cameras. We're looking at Wi-Fi, not in the building, but broadcast out throughout the common and the Academy Building lawn, which would be an open, an open Wi-Fi for, you know, anybody that wants to sit out on the benches or sit on the lawn and peruse the internet. So that is in the works, too. There are a lot of other minor, minor items that have been budgeted, which are in process, but those are certainly the major ones. But happy to, happy to answer questions on that one as well.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? Bless you. Seeing none. 2021 committee presentation update, presentations, I should say.
And I just put this on just to make sure that council remembered that we ran through most of the list mostly prior to the COVID shutdown in March. But we will come back to committee presentations and updates in front of the council, ostensibly starting with your next meeting, where you'll have the school board and the Finance Committee. But certainly continuing on from there, we will bring, bring all the committees back for a healthy discussion. And if there's any that the council wants to see, you know, before others, just feel free to let Anne or me know that, and we'll try to schedule. Just feel free to let Anne or, or me know that and we'll try to schedule those. You know, earlier rather than later. So that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
So Mr. Dutton, I'm glad you brought that up, so after the 19th meeting, I don't think we've had the Board of Recreation in front of us yet. So I'd really like to get them in after that. And I'd really like to get their secret too, I don't think since I've been on. The council that they've had an opening on their committee, so I'd really like to know. What they're doing to not only attract but retain people, since I think they're the only committee we have that doesn't have openings and major turnover. Anyone else? Any questions? Already, any other?
It's probably the ability to work with Charlie Simons, Mr. George, that, that's what I would imagine.
It, I, I'm not disagreeing, Mr. Fitzgibbons, but that speculation I want to hear from the proverbial horse's mouth, okay? Any other items for our next meeting, please let Anne or, Anne or Mr. Dutton know. All right, moving on to discussions, Mr. Rollins, I'm, I'm gonna look for your guidance on this, so. I was unaware that there was, I'll say confusion or lack of direction in regards to the precinct five seat. Is it, can we have a discussion right now, or do I have to put that on the next agenda, at, at least to get guidance? Or do we have to just put on the next agenda?
I, I'm happy to have you put it on the next agenda, I, I don't think it's an issue that. Really needs to be voted on, it, it can probably simply be something that I discussed with the town clerk. I, I wasn't aware there was confusion, it's my understanding that based on the fact that that seat is currently vacant. Though being filled by Counselor Columbotus pursuant to the charter and the holdover provision of the charter. There should be a candidate or the availability for a candidate to be put forth. For the next election to serve out the remainder of the term that would have started. Had there been an eligible candidate elected at the last election, so. There should be availability for papers to be pulled for District Five, and if someone does, there obviously should be. An election relative to that or write-in votes relative to that, certainly. But that, that, I think that's as clear as, as I can be about it, I, I certainly can answer any questions that the. Town clerk has privately relative to that, but I, I think just for purposes of you all, that's, that's what I would say.
All right, so Anne, if, if I could ask if we could put for discussion for the next meeting, hopefully that's a brief discussion around the precinct five seat, that'd be great. Sure. Thank you. All right, committee reports, any committee reports? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to legislation for action. Ordinance D F Y 21 dash 003, zoning ordinance, zoning map amendment Pleasant Street. After meeting held on November 10th, 2020, the Town Council voted to. Re-refer the measure to the Planning Board and the Community and Economic Development Committee for a second joint public hearing. The committee held a duly advertised joint public hearing on December, December 2nd, 2020. The Planning Board voted unanimously not to support the measure as written, however. Would support with the proposed amendments by the Community and Economic Development Committee. At their meeting on December 15th, 2020, the Town Council voted to adopt amendments. This measure may, excuse me, this measure has been duly advertised in the enterprise and the town's website. Therefore, may be finally considered this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Souza, any discussion?
I was at that meeting. And I agreed with them, I thought changes they made were definitely necessary and this thing should go forward.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions? Any other counselors? Mr. Wood?
Thank you, you know, obviously there was a little bit of confusion about this, I think in the end we worked it out. I'm hoping that in the future, when an item like this comes together, maybe there's some vetting done ahead of time. By, you know, experts on the zoning field, before it gets on the council, it makes things a little smoother. President George, you accurately portrayed the votes and, and the support of the Planning Board. There, there was no doubt that they will support, you know, what, what the after effect is, but they're a yes/no team, so. Their, their only option in that case was to support a no. But then they said with, with the condition that, you know, the amendments that we worked through that night passed, so. I think we're in a good spot, I'm hoping that next time there's less confusion, thanks.
This is Loesch.
Thank you, I mean, to be clear, this has been something that the council has been working on for months, if not. Over a year, so to say it wasn't fully vetted might be a little bit. Premature or not fully accurate, dysgenous may actually come to mind, but I just want to thank the planning. Board as well as the Community and Economic Development Team for taking the time to do this. It was started off as a very simple ask and it grew and it grew, much like most things do. In town, so I just wanted to say thank you for putting in the time, re-looking at things, you know, re. Evaluating and probably re-explaining yourselves. More times than you care to, but I just want to say thank you and looking forward to this passing tonight.
Mr. Wood?
Thanks, I appreciate and understand those comments. There was, just so everybody's aware, there was a problem with the setback and the linkage back to the residential area. It needed to be worked out, and, and that was the confusion, so. It was as simple as that, overall, the properties didn't change, but, but the actual line of the zone had to be modified. And that's what we worked through, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Do not have any old business, moving on to new business. Order O F Y 21 dash 026, laying out and acceptance of a private way, Stone Hill Lane. I will entertain a motion. For the council's intention to lay out the way.
So moved, so moved.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
No, you know, this is in District Two, so I figured I'd sponsor it, so we'll just move it forward.
Mr. Chase, any questions?
No, none, thank you.
Any, any questions from any counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to refer to the Planning Board for a non-binding recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
No, thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none against.
Okay, moving on to Order O F Y 21 dash 027, transfer order. Employee contractual buyout, Mr. Dutton, do you have anything to add to this?
Only that these are employees that have already left, I think you will see some more of these, we have some retirements coming up in. In our police department, and so you'll see more coming up your way, but these are ones that have already left.
Okay, I'll, any questions for Mr. Dutton?
Just, just one, Mr. President. To the extent we can, Mr. Dutton, are we trying to spread these out over a couple fiscal years to make the payments?
In front of you, the ones that you will see coming up, transfers from the employee sick buyback. Stabilization fund, or I can't remember the exact name of it. We are definitely contractually allowed to spread those out over a couple of years. And we, we will do that, we have an incentive to do that, actually the employee also has an incentive to do that, so we do try to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to refer to the Budget, Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yeah.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
And moving on to Order O F Y 21 dash 028, acceptance of a private donation. Excuse me, Mr. Dutton, anything to add?
Nothing to add, other than what is in front of you at this time, very kind donation.
Any questions for Mr. Dutton? I'll entertain a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbons, any questions?
None, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, none, thank you.
Any questions from any other counselors? Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to citizens' comments, are there any, there any citizens who would like to comment? Please keep it to three minutes, please state your name and your street for the record, are there any citizens who would like to comment? Anne, I don't see anyone, do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. Moving on to council comments, I will start with Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you again for running a very smooth Zoom meeting, I know it can't be easy and I appreciate that. My comments tonight, and I see she's still on the call, which is great, to thank Ms. Burke for some constituent service for me. Had a call from somebody in Precinct Two who had an issue with something and. I was able to reach Ms. Burke and she was able to give me the information that this person needed, and it was, it was very smooth, so thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Columbotus?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Souza?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Mr. Rushton?
Sorry about that, nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you, just, just two quick items. My New Year's resolution is to talk slower during comments, apparently I talk too fast, that was never the case years ago. The second thing has to do with the holiday lights on the common, we took them down Saturday. Thank yous to Counselor Gallagher and, and other lines and folks that helped out. There were a lot of comments about the, the lights themselves, so I want to put it out to this group and anyone else. If you have ideas about the lights on the trees or lights on the rails or ways to enhance the lights themselves. More than, more than welcome to hear how to do that from others, we, I think we can get funding. It's just a matter of design at this point, some of the trees that we used to put lights on have been. Have been taken down or reshaped, and it's a little more difficult than it used to be, so any help would be good, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, no comment, thank you.
Mrs. Loesch?
Shockingly, I do, you know, I'm not one to take extra time, but here I am. I want to say Happy New Year to everybody, but as we were talking about the election on the top of the meeting. I want to welcome all the people of District One to pull papers, because I will be moving. And no longer will be able to serve the district, so I'm hoping that. All the folks that I've met over the past six years have been inspired and, and excited to join this motley crew. And really make a change and have an impact in town, so if anyone is interested, scared. Has questions, I'm here to answer, I'm on Facebook, I'm here on email, and if you reach out to the council clerk, she knows how to find me the best. But I'm, I really enjoyed the six years that I've had on the council. But per charter and rules, you have to live in the district in which you serve, and by the end of my term, I will no longer. And I won't tell you which district I'm moving to to keep the rest of you on your toes when you see my name on the ballot again, so. I'm looking forward to volunteering in the meantime, but again, encourage folks for all the roles that are open. Library, town clerk and other council roles to really pull papers, we would love to see more folks getting involved and. It's not as scary as it seems, so thank you, everybody, and I will now pass it to, I think, Dennis, which could go either way.
Right.
Mr. Gallagher?
Mr. Gallagher, yes, Happy New Year, it's great to be back, I'm looking forward to this year, have a good night.
All right, just a couple things, well, congratulations, Mrs. Loesch, I'm sad to see that you're. Going to be leaving the council, but glad to hear that you're staying in Bridgewater, which is great. Happy New Year to everyone as well, and I would like to echo in general, I mean, we technically, I believe, have three. Seats that will be open, if there's any interest. You know, please reach out to that particular counselor, reach out to the Town Council Clerk, we'll get information out to anyone. We really, I, you know, I, I really, I think we'd all like to see. A lot more participation in various ways, not just in the council, but also with the committees as well, so. Hopefully, I know Mr. Wood has a, he has a resolution to talk slower. We'll have to talk about that resolution later, but hopefully my resolution is to get more people involved in various. Various aspects, so that is it for me, we do not have executive session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Sorry about that, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yeah.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All right, everyone have a good evening.